Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Crook County Board of Commissioners Wednesday meeting. Today is Wednesday, April 2nd, 2025, and it's nine o'clock a.m. Under Sheriff, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Let's lead us to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have Brian Karmick from Eastside Church here this morning to give us a prayer. That's fine.
Father, we thank you. Jeremiah 29 says that you give us the future. I want to thank you for those that serve in leadership here and the way they lead us to the future. A blessing on each one of them today, and a blessing on everything that is said here and done here may be a real spirit of unity and bond of peace, working well together as a team, Lord, to see the very best for Crook County and beyond. And we just really pray that you would be lifted up, glorified in everything that is said and done today. I pray a blessing too on people that are here. You see needs, you see challenges that they face, and I pray your grace, your wisdom, your strength during the journey. Say all this in Jesus' name.
Amen. Thank you, Brian.
Next public comment. Adam, please step forward.
Adam McColsky, 3992 Northwest to Hansick Lane, and I could spell Stahansick.
I do. I know how.
So John's not here today because I was going to ask some questions, but I did talk to Will about some of the things I was going to bring forward. And it's basically the same old stuff, but I am going to talk about the biomass plant and make some questions on that. But just kind of going back to history of, you know, Knife River and the CUP and what's being done or not being done. We went through some notes the other day because we're kind of cleaning house. And when we were doing the veneer property, CUP or the Planning Department, I brought up, and there's an exhibit in there, number 29, that I noticed there wasn't any weed control plan. The Woodward CUP required a plan that never was completed, hence it isn't followed. I know we put in a complaint for that. Their response is now they have one. Well, what happened between 2015 and now before they got that? So there's a, there's a miss on that. Yeah, you can fix it now, but we missed it. The second one is actually a response, I'm trying to get it in five minutes, is a response to what we got back from the county after putting in all the CUP violations, and this had to do with the de-watering. The response actually said, received response from Knife River on Q1825, which summarizes that the last de-watering on site was from 2020, which was reported DEQ. That is true. The problem with it is, is one of the things for that in the CUP says that the applicant shall also, at its expense and assuming neighbor permission, have water well reports performed by an independent expert on the five wells, other than the applicant's well, and any wells in the neighboring HM Zone properties nearest to the Woodward site, including two to the south and whatever, it lists those. Such well reports shall save as a baseline against which possible future changes in water quality can be assessed. A copy of the well report shall be provided to the applicant. They failed to do that. That is one thing they can't fix right now and never fix, and don't even intend on fixing that. So what is, what is the county as far as you have a CUP here? My question to the county would be, what's going to get done? Because apparently they just keep failing and failing. And we put in another CUP violation about parking. They're supposed to park all onsite, which their trucks are pulling in, and they're still parking on LaMonta Monday from seven, maybe to 7:30. It was a contractor truck that was going in there. It was parked on LaMonta. So they understand what the CUP states, but apparently they just don't follow it. They don't share it with their folks or whatever. So really, what teeth, if any, if the county's planning or anybody going to do anything? Because I know the future is going to be just as bad if the past and the present isn't working. So I just wanted to bring it out to record again and maybe get an answer. And since John's not here, I probably won't get an answer, but Will may have the answer or may not.
I, I, I want to be careful about responding to things that John. I know John's been working closely on this, this matter over the last couple of months, few months, and I, I don't want to, I don't want to misspeak, but I will say if I understand the concern about the, the well monitoring and have to do that as part of the Woodward CUP. I believe that was an issue that came up in Commissioner Hermre, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe when we met with Knife River, we asked them to look into that because that was a condition that was pointed out to them in that meeting. So they thought they had reached out and asked people if they wanted their wells to be monitored. So we're hoping to get a response back to them to what they actually did in terms of that original, original CUP. The, you know, this is a completely unsatisfactory answer, I'm sure, but I think it's really important that when you identify those violations, whether it's something like parking, you know, where they're not supposed to be parked, make sure you let us know. We'll continue to keep a record of that, follow the process that's outlined in our code for handling those.
Well, you're right. This is an unsatisfactory answer. It's kind of like, like we keep coming back. We keep talking about the same thing. And, you know, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again, but expecting different results. And I think when you talk, I'm not going to speak for the neighborhood, but I, but I spoke to a few. People get tired of it. It's almost like you're going to give up. And, and I think that's what Knife River is waiting for, is for everybody just to give up. But there's a lot of people affected with their water and, you know, their property values and all that, and they're just actually stuck there. And so it's basically the same thing. And I did leave one out because Karen and I, before we would meet with Knife River with complaints on the CUP before we would go to the county, because we, they asked us to do that, which was a mistake for us because it never got into record. But this was from 2019. We met with them and we talked about those trees that they're now going to replant in April, if they are going to do it. And, and the weeds, we talked about the weeds then and the weed control plan, and nothing ever got done. So it's basically, it is kind of insanity. You're just doing the same thing over and over again. And we're not getting any kind of answers on what the county is going to do if there is a plan. I don't want any secrets out or whatever, but there's got to be some transparency because it's getting really, really frustrating.
I, I do think, Adam, there's a greater realization, and I, I, I think you'll agree with this statement. Will, I think there's a greater realization on their part now. I think they were kind of going around and doing business. I think there is a greater realization of, of the effect that they've had on the community. I'm not, I'll just say that. That's all I'm going to say right now. And I, I, I've seen for the first time that I think that they're realizing what's going on, and I'm hoping that there's a correction. And I think that DEQ and Dagami are moving forward with the testing and that. And again, I, I'm sorry, I can't give you a more satisfactory answer. I wish I could. And I wish our hands weren't so tied with the state agencies. And I hate to tell you to be patient, but we're kind of at that brink right there. And hopefully with the additional testing, we have more answers. And I do thank you for your patience. And I do like seeing you every other Wednesday. I do.
And we will be here. Karen couldn't make it today, but it's
Tell her I miss her.
Maybe next time I'll be in a cowboy hat and a straitjacket because it's
Tell her that I tell Karen I miss her. Tell her hello, okay?
Okay. One more comment real quick is, is about the biomass plant. And I think the maybe a comment would be the transparency. It's been like a hidden secret where they're going to do it and whatever. I even asked maybe one of the commissioners, I'm not going to point it out. I did ask a commissioner. The answer I got, this was about two months ago or whatever, where is this site going to be located? Because it was a secret. And that's the city thing. That's their deal. The problem with where the property is, and now it's out there where it's located, is it's going to be in there, they're going to move the urban growth boundary. So that wasn't really transparent to the citizens, and I don't even know the people around where that Stafford pit is because that's where it's going. What they even know what's going to happen when they put that biomass plant in there and all that. So there's an issue with transparency in the government and government getting involved in business like running a generator, whatever. And also in the county here, another comment is anytime there's a new plan or somebody puts in something, and then there's a planning commission meeting, everybody works on it for a year or two, whatever company wants to bring it in, but the neighbors get a 30-day notice within 500 feet of there. And we scrambled for, for 30 days to try to figure out what we're going to do. And I think the purpose of 30 days is so you don't get public comment, and we don't get the right kind of people involved in that thing because we don't have time to do it, even though you guys are hate to use the word you guys, and I'm not pointing fingers. The county knows it's coming. We get 30 days. And, and then so it's, it's not, it's really hard on us to try to actually come back, but it looks like it's, that's, that's the purpose is so that, so you know people are going to come back on you every time because if somebody else gets affected and stuff. So anyway, I thought I'd make that comment. Maybe we can change that and not move from 500 feet, make it a lot further. Because when you're out in the country, 500 feet is nothing. My rope in the rain is 250 feet long, 275. That's just another 250 feet, which means it'll be on my property. So nobody else knows unless the neighbors have to go out and tell everybody. So I don't know if that can get changed, but more transparency would be better because you know what? It's affecting lives in the county, not just the businesses.
And when I was on the planning commission, I do agree with you, particularly on large parcels. I, I do agree with you on that statement totally.
Will, will you talk a little bit about why we do the state minimum or state maximum or however we do that? Because if you go past that, then you can get yourself in trouble with other areas. And a lot of these things are set at the state level. They're not county levels. And so if you go outside of that, you can really put yourself in a pinch.
Yeah. So Adam, you touched on a couple of rules that we implement as a county that are established by the state. So there's, there's timelines with applications. We, we very rarely get an application that sits on a planner's desk for two or three years or even a year. There's a once we receive an application and it's accepted, we have 150 days to provide a final decision. Or else they can just go to Circuit Court and say approve it. So we have a pretty tight timeline. One of the reasons we don't initially send out like a notice of just the application is because we, after we've accepted the application, we have 30 days to get notice out to the applicant that it's incomplete. And a lot of the time, if there is an incomplete application, it's because of something substantive that is wrong with the application and it won't proceed. So there's, there, there is, there's reason. There's a lot of work to go on that goes on in the background after an application is received to make sure it's actually something that can be approved. And if it can't, we don't want to, it's just, it would put people through an unnecessary kind of, oh no, we have to gear up and fight this when maybe it's not even going to proceed. The state then has notice requirements for when notice goes out. And we normally we, we typically comply with that by getting it out a day or two early just because of publication timeline. As far as like the distance around, the state has different rules for different zones. I think in EFU, it's 750 feet. Your property's owned EFU, correct? So it'd be 750 feet if it was your property that the application was, or it would be 750 around that. One of the concerns a lot of counties have is if you expand that and you, you miss a notice or you do there's potential liability for the county if you don't capture everybody that we are saying we're going to, we're going to notice. So there's been a long practice throughout in, in many jurisdictions of just doing what the state requires as a minimum. So there is, as Commissioner Crawford was alluding to, there is some, some liability. We're trying to expand that beyond what the, what the state requires.
Is there, is there any possibility to say, you know, if you have 150 days, if you could put out a notice of intent of somebody doing something rather than waiting until you're already scheduled a hearing, and it's 30 days and, and you get a notice, if there was at least an intent to that somebody's going to do something, whether it happens or not, is that possible to do an intent notice? And then that, that way the surrounding areas or the public or whoever can actually have some time to look at it rather than scramble in 30 days because people do have jobs and all that. And, you know, work, they just don't, you know, they just can't go around during the day and do that. Anyway, just a thought. I think I took more than five minutes.
But it's entertaining.
At the end, if I can, if I think of something else.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Adam. Anybody else have any comments? Anyone online has any comments they want to make? Would you please, in the chat box, let us know? We'll move on. There aren't any corrections or deletion or anything on the consent agenda, entertain a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second that motion?
Motion's been moved, seconded. Any discussion?
No discussion?
Nope.
All in favor, say aye.
Hermre, aye.
Crawford, aye.
Barney, aye. So moved. Discussion, be on it.
Good morning, everyone. Okay, so we are, I am just coming to you to update you on employee recognition and then recognizing our anniversary month employees this month. So as you know, over the course of time, we have been doing the catch-up from 35 years of service through down to one year of service. So now that we're completely caught up, everyone that's worked for us this entire time from one year to 35 has gotten their certificates and pins. And so now we don't have to worry about catching up with anyone, but now it's just staying consistent in recognizing those that hit their anniversary. Like this month, we have three people. So for this month, we have Katie Plung, who's been with us for, it will be her 10-year anniversary on the 7th of this month. And I know Katie's here. And then we have Katrina with, Katie's with the Health Department. And then we have Katrina Kirfman from the Sheriff's Office, who is also hitting her 10-year anniversary this month. And then we have Bryce Wabi from the Sheriff's Office, who has just completed his one year with the Sheriff's Office. And then during the catch-up, it was brought to my attention by Brad Haynes, our Road Superintendent, that Chad Penhallow was missed in the 10-year catch-up. And so he already got his certificate and everything, but he is also being recognized for his 10 years of service. So we have three for anniversary this month, but then one catch-up for Chad, Chad Penhallow from the Road Department. So those are our anniversary this month. And then every month I will come with just what few people we have hitting a milestone in that month. It'll just be the first regular session. Might be two or three, might just be one. So I think we're all caught up on recognizing our employees and I appreciate all of their service. I know that even one year may not seem like a lot, but it's a milestone and we appreciate their service to Crook County. So that's what I got.
Yes, we do appreciate their service and we
The handshake and the handout?
And we do appreciate you catching up on us and doing this for us. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. I think Katie's our only one that's here.
She gets
But she is
Do this out on the handshake?
No.
Are we going to walk over to the courthouse and take a picture?
We're thinking about doing seasonal photos since we are going to be doing just less
That's a much better idea.
So, but we will do this
Thank you, brother.
Thank you, Kay. How many did you want? Okay, thank you.
Hey, Tara.
I was looking for, I was like, where's Tara? I see her on the list.
Uh, thank you so much for inviting me to recognize April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. My name is Rachel Visser. I'm the Prevention Education Manager at Kid Center. Here with me today are representatives from Mountain Star Family Relief Nursery and Healthy Families of the High Desert. Child Abuse Prevention Month is a time to bring awareness to organizations that support children and families. This year, we are announcing a partnership with Healthy Families of the High Desert, Kid Center, and Mountain Star Family Relief Nursery. Each organization works to prevent abuse and neglect to protect children and support families. Whether through Healthy Families Home Visits and Monthly Groups, Kid Center's Prevention Education Programs, or Mountain Star's Crisis Intervention and Therapeutic Services, we work to strengthen families together. The statistics surrounding child abuse and neglect in our region are really sobering. With the data book from Oregon Department of, or Oregon DHS, in 2023, 532 confirmed cases of abuse and neglect happened within Central Oregon. Shockingly, 42% of these cases involved children six years or younger. And in 2023, 19 Oregon children died from causes related to abuse. 14 of them were from neglect. 14 victims were age five and younger, and eight of those were actually younger than one year old. These numbers demonstrate the vulnerability of young children and the true need to support families in our community. I'm going to talk a little bit about each organization so we understand the roles that we do in the community. Healthy Families of the High Desert is a free and voluntary home visiting program that is family-centered, culturally sensitive, strength-based, and proven effective in cultivating and strengthening and a nurturing, nurturing, ooh, nurturing parent-child relationship and preventing child abuse and neglect. Healthy Families works with families prenatally or at birth, providing fun, engaging, and educational home visits for three years. Its family support specialists work together with families in their home to track baby's development, discuss positive parenting practices, do early literacy development, health and safety, as well as connecting them to community resources. Healthy Families of the High Desert is part of the Healthy Families America Program and a larger Prevent Child Abuse America. They are an accredited program that has been serving families in Central Oregon for over 30 years. Kid Center operates Central Oregon's Children's Advocacy Center. We work with community partners to serve children and families across the region in a trauma-focused, child-friendly manner. Kid Center provides free therapy, forensic interviews, family advocacy, and child-friendly medical examinations for families impacted by abuse. To address the goal of preventing child abuse from ever occurring, Kid Center offers free child abuse prevention trainings across the region to bolster the community's awareness and knowledge of the issue and to shift them into action. Mountain Star Family Relief Nursery believes that every child deserves a safe and nurturing environment in which to grow and thrive. Through a combination of early intervention programs, trauma-informed care, parenting education services, and direct family support, Mountain Star works to safeguard children during their most critical developmental stages. Mountain Star's therapeutic classrooms provide a safe place for children living in high-stress and chaotic homes, offering them a pathway for healthy development and stability. Child abuse prevention is the work that Mountain Star does every day, keeping kids safe and helping parents be successful. So as we bring this here, what can we do? Attend and invite families to the Communities for Kids event this April in every county. These events are structured so that children and family can connect with resources that can help support them to become strong, thriving families. These occur each consecutive week in April, starting in Warm Springs, followed by Ben, Madras, and ending in Primeville. These events are free with resource tables, games, prizes, and a food truck for everyone to enjoy in. Second thing, volunteer. Volunteer your time and expertise at organizations that strengthen support for children and families. Third is to advocate. Advocate for policies that lower stressors on families and reduce the risk of maltreatment. And then lastly, donate. Community investment is the driver for change. Support local nonprofits to ensure that their services remain free and available to children and families that need them. Healthy Families, Kid Center, and Mountain Star have had a tremendous impact on children and the prevention of child abuse in their efforts across the region. The direct services provided these nonprofits to best respond to the needs of families. We're grateful to you, to our county commissioners, for recognizing the importance of our work and prioritizing the safety of our community's children. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. I have a proclamation. Before the Board of County Commissioners of Crook County, Oregon, a proclamation declaring April 2025 to be a Child Abuse Preventive Month. Proclamation, whereas there were over 4,700 reports of child abuse and neglect in Central Oregon last year resulting in over 2,300 investigations of child abuse and neglect. And whereas we all have a responsibility as individual, neighbors, community members, and citizens of Central Oregon to help create a healthy, safe, nurturing experiences for children. And whereas safe and healthy childhoods help produce confident and successful adults. And whereas child abuse and neglect often occur when people find themselves in stressful situations without community resources and don't know how to cope. And whereas the majority of child abuse and neglect cases stem from situations and conditions that are preventable with the support of an engaged community. And whereas, whereas children abuse and neglect can be reduced by making sure the families have the support and access to ser, and to services they need to raise their children in a healthy environment. And whereas child abuse and neglect not only directly harm children, but the trauma can also increase the likelihood of criminal behavior, substance abuse, health problems such as heart disease and obesity, obesity, and poor academic outcomes. And whereas effective prevention programs succeed because of partnerships among agencies, schools, faith communities, philanthropic and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Crook County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim April 2025 to be Child Abuse Preventative Month in Crook County, and we urge all citizens to work together to make sure every family has the support they need and deserve to raise their children in a healthy environment. Dated the second day of April 2025 by the Crook County Board of Commissioners. Would you entertain a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve the proclamation.
I second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the proclamation. Any discussion?
No discussion.
All in favor, say aye.
Hermre, aye.
Crawford, aye.
Barney, aye.
I want to commend you for your work. When I was a, I was a medical laboratory technologist, and I was called up, I was very young, and I was called up to a child abuse case to draw blood. And the impact it had on my life, I won't, it's something you never, ever forget. And I commend you for all the work you do.
Yes, thank you, Rachel.
Yeah, I know you guys do a lot for this community, so thank you so much.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Melissa.
Good morning, and thank you for having me. My name is Melissa Hardzelt. I am the Secretary Treasurer for the Post-Palina Rangeland Fire Protection Association. And without, everybody knows, this summer, 2024, or last summer, was a fire season unseen in our 20 years of our association. First, we fought the Durgan, Camp Creek, and Crazy Creek fires, all three together at the same time, a two-week span, end of July and August. We got a short break, and then Labor Day brought two new monsters, Wiley Flat and Rail Ridge. Racing through the mountains, all of these fires heading for many ranch headquarters. With multiple fires at the same time, we faced the challenge of dividing our resources and staying in communication with each other. We had countless miles of dozer lines cut and backburns lit to protect the homes of our members. Throughout the summer, we were on several different evacuation levels affecting our mail, the school, and even the 25th Annual Palina Rodeo was in jeopardy of being canceled. Our community has never seen a summer like this. The loss of grass, timber, fences, and even some cattle will be felt for the years to come. In total, we faced eleven fires, some quite small, some very large. Our volunteers, which included of our high school-aged children and, uh, wives providing meals and their younger children helping disperse those meals. Uh, our firefighters spent thirty-two days in a two-month time span, twenty-seven hundred hours, and we traveled just over five thousand miles to support our neighbors in a time of need. Um, our community found great support in each other. Um, as I said, the meals, I know, Susie, you, uh, helped fund us some meals. The library supported us with meals and water, the church also, uh, Palina, Prineville Calvary and Palina, um, churches helped us with meals because we were on our own. We didn't go to fire camp that was set up, um, that was provided to the paid firefighters. So we were very grateful for those meals provided, um, and our energy was running very low after many days of first thing in the morning, getting up, doing what we could to keep our cows safe and our our ranch duties, um, because we knew noon to two o'clock was when we were going to get the call to get online with the fire and start fighting until sometimes two o'clock in the morning. We were very fortunate to not have any major equipment breakdowns or losses, but we definitely depleted our backup supplies. This year, we will not only be, it will not only be a rebuild for our ranchers, but our association is in need of resupply of radios and tools, hoses and nozzles, small engine and pumps for our slip-in tanks, which also we need to resupply, and spare tires for our types four and type-six engines. I am here today to request funding in the amount of forty-five hundred dollars on behalf of the Post Palina, RFPA, to help us resupply. We are very grateful to Crook County for your years of support, uh, to our association. And I thank you again for having me today.
So, this Saturday, Senator Merkley is having a town hall meeting, and he is going to be honoring the Post Palina Rangeland Fire Protection Association. That is a really big title. We need to kind of shorten that up. It's almost bigger than we are. But anyway, and actually, if you could send me that so he would have a few more facts would be great because then I'll forward that to him. Anyway, so I thought that was very special that he's going to honor us at the town hall meeting. But I would be very happy to make a motion to approve the forty-five hundred dollars. It is in our budget line, so it isn't anything we have to worry about, uh, begging Christina for, who's back there nodding her head. So I make the motion to approve the forty-five hundred for the Post Palina Rangeland Fire Protection Association.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve forty-five hundred for the Rangeland Fire Protection District. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or discussion first.
Oh, yeah, I have no discussion, except thank you very much. That was very good presentation, Melissa. You did well.
Thank you.
Perfect. That would be great. Thank you.
Great presentation, and it's something that I think we've, I've, I've been excited about being part of this for quite a few years, and I'm glad that you guys are there when, when issues come up. Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you, Melissa, very much.
All in favor, say aye.
Hermrich, aye.
Crawford, aye.
Barney, aye. So moved.
And one of the other things to note is there were two house bills, thirty-three forty-nine, which was for the forestry to be able to give old equipment to the Rangeland Protection Associations, and also thirty-three fifty, which was for one million dollars of funding for the Rangeland Protections. And it's been kind of going through the legislature, and it looks like it has a high success rate. So that will be very good for our little associations. Yes. Perfect.
Thank you. Christina. You talked to us about the election of the official compensation committee.
Morning Commissioners, Christina here, Finance Director. Um, this item is order number two thousand and twenty-five dash zero eight and is in response to, uh, the discussion that was had last regular meeting regarding appointment of, um, two more members of the compensation committee for the elected officials. So this order, um, just states that the Board of Commissioners has carefully considered the skills and talents of the applicants and needs of the boards with vacancies, and you wish to expand the elected official compensation committee under ORS two oh four point one-one-two to a total of four members, which include filling the vacancy in position one and appointing a new member into position number four. The incumbents in position number two and number three will continue to serve for their previously stated terms. The, uh, position number one would be filled by Scott Tibbs with a three-year term expiring in two thousand and twenty-seven, uh, December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven, and the new position number four would be filled by Stephen Brown, the three-year term expiring December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-seven.
Thank you. Entertain a motion. Any questions?
I have no questions. I make a motion in the matter of the appointment to the Crook County Elected Official Compensation Committee, order number two oh two-five dash oh eight for approval.
Second.
Most been made and seconded to approve order number two thousand and twenty-five dash oh eight. All in favor, or any discussion?
I have no discussion.
All in favor, say aye.
Uh, Hermrich, aye.
Crawford, aye.
Barney, aye. So moved. Thank you, Christina.
Do we have to say our names? I, I enjoy doing it. Don't get me wrong.
That's what they kind of said in the thing.
Here's my, here's my point. If it's all, if everybody's in favor of it, then they should know, then they would know that we all like it, right?
That's what they said on that one thing.
And I think if it's like a contentious deal, maybe, I think that makes more sense.
What do you think, Will? That's what they kind of said at the deal was to say our names. So that's what I've been following at that deal. They said you should say so.
Yeah, I, I think that's
County manager.
I think that's the safest practice. Um, well, we, I think the same same effect, um, can be, um, accomplished through having the minutes reflect how each commissioner voted. That's how we, historically, we've done it at the Planning Commission, but, or maybe more recently done it at the Planning Commission level. Uh, but I do think, like, just to be safe there, uh, we can certainly look into it.
Yeah, that's, it'd be worth it. I mean, it's not a huge deal. It's just.
What, you don't like your name?
Maybe it's not my name I don't like. No, I just, it just seems wonky to me. I don't know. I, every, if we all agree, then we're all
I, I understand your point.
The, the same, the same vote is if we all vote yes, then we know who voted yes. So I, I
I'll vote no on something. Just throw it out.
This next one.
Brad.
All right, Brad.
Talk to us, please.
It's Mr. Blaine that's gonna do this. I'm just backup.
Commissioners, what you have in front of you is a collective bargaining agreement for the, um, Counties Road Department Union. I understand that the Road Union has approved this, um, document, uh, Monday evening. Um, you have a brief memo in your packet which describes the important changes. They include changing the timeframes for, uh, both parties in the event there is a grievance filed. Um, alters the method by which a five-eight schedule can be approved, um, adds a holiday um, to the stated schedule, a modest increase to the annual boot allowance. Um, I understand that, um, the, uh, road crew has been very scrupulous about applying the boot allowance. This is not for, uh, getting, you know, the county to pay for hunting supplies. This is for work, um, for which we are grateful. Um, some alterations to the 401K contribution paragraph, uh, and the inclusion of a, uh, new compensation weight scale. There are a lot of people who contributed to getting to this point, and if I thank them all, uh, we'd be here all day. But I do want to, um, really appreciate, uh, Brad's work on this. Uh, of course, he's got a managed, uh, very complicated department. Um, you know, there are a lot of consequences that will follow if something is overlooked in the Road Department. Bridges fall down, for instance. Um, but he has made the time to help get us to this juncture, and I want to call out, uh, how much I appreciate all of his contributions. Um, and with that, um, the last thing I'll mention, uh, you'll see in the memo, there's a section there that says, "Please note," um, that talks about a supplemental agreement. It is not incorporated into the terms of the contract itself, um, but it is nevertheless an obligation that the county needs to follow. Um, so assuming that the collective bargaining agreement is approved today, uh, and assuming that we received a signed copy from the union today, uh, that will trigger the fourteen-day period during which then the county will, um, issue that additional, um, payment. Any questions?
No questions.
No questions.
At all.
Seth. No questions. Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve the contract.
So Eric, would you, uh, just to be sure that we do this properly, would you kind of, uh, word a motion? So it would be properly worded for us?
Um, so what I might suggest is a motion to approve the Crook County Road Department and ask me Council Seventy-Five collective bargaining agreement for the Road Department Union. Um, the contract term is July one, two thousand and twenty-four through June thirty, two thousand and twenty-seven.
So moved.
Second.
Most been made and seconded to approve the, uh, Crook County Road Department contract. All in favors, any discussion?
No discussion.
All in favor, say aye.
Hermrich, aye.
Crawford, aye.
Barney, aye. So moved. Thank you, Brad.
Yes. Thank you for all your
Eric.
Yeah, you bet.
Yeah, good job, guys. That was a lot of work. You did a really good job, good, uh, really good job with the outcome as well.
Yes, did very well.
For everybody.
Yes.
So, chip seal. It crushed rock.
Yes, um, I'm here today to, um, ask for, um, authorization to sign out of, out of, uh, court a contract for, uh, chip seal contract for crush rock. Uh, we had a rock preparation bid go out on March seventh. It closed March twenty-sixth. We had two bidders, uh, JSW Unlimited and Sigmund Excavation and Construction. And the lowest bidder was JSW Unlimited Incorporated for a hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars. And I would like to, uh, ask for authorization to get that signed out of court for a bid.
And Commissioners, you've heard me say this before, uh, we tend not to do that sort of thing with contracts, but in this case, um, the contract was included in the RFP itself. There's been the opportunity for the public to review and comment on the RFP. Um, and the advantage of authorizing a signature outside of court uh, is that it speeds up the execution process, um, between today, when a decision would be made to who to award the contract to, when the contract is signed, there are still a number of different steps we need to follow. Um, and giving that time allows us, uh, to make sure those steps are followed without then having an additional delay of bringing the matter back to, um, a court meeting or a Board of Commissioners meeting. Um, and again, the contract terms have already been published. They are available. Um, they have been available for the public scrutiny, so they've had a chance to say we have concerns about these contractors.
Okay.
I would make a motion to approve the chip seal rock crush bid results.
I think you should say JSW Unlimited. I, I feel that would be better.
Um, probably quote the price. One fifteen, four twenty-five.
One fifteen, four twenty-five, being awarded to SJ.
JSW Unlimited.
SJSW or JS?
JSW.
KSW. JSW. Corporation. Corporation.
And I will second that motion as presented.
And you, we want to sign this out of court?
Yes, that should be
And to sign it out of court.
I will, uh, uh, second the amended motion.
So a motion's been made and seconded to approve the rock crush from JSW Unlimited. Um, any discussion?
No discussion.
All in favor, say aye.
Hermrich, aye.
Crawford, aye.
Barney, aye. So moved.
Thank you. I will get with JSW and start the process.
Thank you, Brad. Where, where is the rock crushing? Which pit is it?
It's coming out of the Porte Pit up on top of the hill, and we're delivering it to, uh, Hilltop Pit and our, uh, county yard for, uh, completion of the Junior Canyon Gypsy this year. Thank you.
Thank you. So last one, appointment, uh, of the board member for the Crook County Road Agency. Eric, you want to discuss that with us?
Yes, so, um, at the meeting last week, uh, the Board of Commissioners approved an amendment to an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Prineville regarding the Crook County Road Agency. The, uh, city had approved the, uh, amendment as well. Uh, one of the changes to that amendment is an alteration, um, as to how the board members for the Crook County Road Agency would be chosen. The new method is that the city will choose one member. Um, the county will choose one member, and then those two members will choose a third member. The request here today is to see if one of you three will volunteer to be a member of the Crook County Road Agency um, to serve on that board. Uh, we'll put our heads together with the city and see if they can appoint someone. Um, and then from there, the two board members will meet and decide who they want to ask to serve as the third member. Uh, I understand there is, uh, some urgency to this, um, that the road agency needs to, um, undertake certain responsibilities, like for instance, executing contracts or say things like audits. Um, so with all that, unless you have any questions, will one of you three please volunteer?
Yeah, I'd be happy to serve on it.
Sounds good to me.
So do we, because of this, how does, so how does this work? Do I make a nomination? How does this work that we do this?
Yeah, so I don't think that it has to be a particularly arcane method. Um, all I think would be required is maybe a motion to uh, appoint Commissioner Barney to serve, uh, on the Crook County Road Agency Board. There'd be a second and a vote.
Okay. I make a motion to appoint Commissioner Barney to the, um, Brook County Road Agency Board.
Second.
Most, any discussion?
I have no discussion.
Most been made and seconded to appoint Commissioner Barney to the Road Department Board. All in favor, say aye.
Hermrich, aye.
Crawford, aye.
Do I vote for myself or abstain?
Um, I don't think there's going to be a conflict of interest on the appointment to the board itself, so, um, you can abstain, it's going to pass, um, or you could vote. I don't think that's critical.
Well, I'll vote aye since I volunteered.
Okay.
Yeah, I kind of say that would be kind of a vote for yourself if you volunteer. You're kind of sad if you voted against yourself.
I know. So, it passed unanimously. Thank you. All right, Managers Report.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, I just have a, I have a few updates for you this morning. Um, I wanted to make a quick note. Last week, uh, John Isler and I, uh, were invited to attend a state agency meeting regarding the groundwater, uh, issue, um, out near the Knife River, um, Aggrega Pit. The, um, the big takeaway from that meeting is several representatives from those state agencies will be here for your next board meeting on four sixteen to do, uh, a presentation to discuss, um, kind of, uh, initial testing results and also next steps. Um, so they will be, uh, be here on four sixteen for that meeting.
What's the date again, Will?
April sixteen.
Well
April sixteenth, so.
And, and so
And would you spread the word, please?
So is, would it be better, I, I'm just kind of asking the public here, would it be better to do it in the evening? So people are, if they're at work, they can make it to the meeting? That, that would be my concern is that, you know, I know that there's, you guys are doing a really good job of having a, a group of people here every meeting, but there's also people that have jobs and doctor's appointments and different things during the day. Uh, and I think it would be take away from, I mean, not take away from, but I think it would be nice to be able to have our regular meeting, get our business done, and not have to take away from the questions and comments of the community and allow them to have more time. And so And so is, is there an opportunity to do it in the evening and ensure that them?
Would the state agencies do that? That's kind of the big question is, will the state agencies do that?
And, and I'm, I'm happy to ask. I know they were, they were trying to scramble to, to find, make sure folks could be here for our, for our regular meeting, but I'm happy to ask. And then maybe I can work with Sarah to get a notice of some sort, you know, that we can do in addition to just the regular agenda that can go out when we know the know the time, but currently the plan is for them to attend the regular board meeting at, at nine o'clock, but I'll, I'll ask.
I would really prefer if they came in the evening, just because there's so many people that have life and jobs and not everybody can just take off in the middle.
And then, and then if we can do an evening meeting, could we still have our board commissioner meeting in the morning and just do our regular business? And could we also possibly put an ad? I don't know. Do people read the newspaper?
They read the roundup.
Or put an ad somewhere and do our Facebook thing where we could at least publicize it a little bit?
What about on one of the, one of the, just, aren't there a lot of people from Cold War Banker there? What if we put something on the reader board? Would you guys be willing to do that?
Just so we could get.
I want as many people as possible to hear from the state and, and more importantly, for the state to hear from as many people as possible.
How many people do you guys anticipate? Cause I'm wondering if we do Carrie Foster Hall. That would be a question too. How many people would you guys anticipate? Well, we wouldn't rent the hall. We, we kind of would get it for free, I would hope, but we'd have to see if it was free first, but I'm just.
I don't know everybody, so I don't, I don't know, but you'll send it out.
Um, how, what's, how many people are on your mailing list? Would you say ballpark? My name is Carrie Foster.
Yeah, I.
Can we, but this is the other thing that I have to ask a question, and this comes with our communications girl right here who knows these things. Can we zoom a meeting at Carrie Foster and do we have capability of this thing at Carrie Foster?
In the, in, in the past, when we have had planning commission meetings in Carrie Foster, we had to bring in outside equipment, a third party to, to help with the microphones, speakers and so it, I don't, some of our stuff may not transfer.
They're not quite as large as Carrie Foster, but the four age building in the Bratton Room of the library might also be possible. So maybe what, what happened is it does sound like there's interest in having a meeting on the evening of the sixteenth. Assuming the state can be here. Uh, and if they're, if they can be here, maybe staff can then investigate where is a available spot. It could be that the Carrie Foster Hall is being rented at the same time.
It, it, and actually it is. Another one of my updates is regarding the TSP update open houses, and those are on the sixteenth in Carrie Foster Hall.
The Clover Building, I know can do Zoom because we've had OFRC there. And you are right about the library. I don't know what happens at the library. Wow, the T, TSP is the same evening, huh?
Let me, let me chat with John a little bit. There's, I think there's a big gap between the two open houses. We might be able to do a later afternoon thing with the state. They do have an open house scheduled for six o'clock at Carrie Foster as well.
This is next Wednesday? Sixteenth.
But maybe we could piggyback on some there. I don't know. So let, let me have a conversation with John.
So that might be a lot for one night.
It's hard because we're working with the state's schedule.
Yeah.
I don't want to make it too difficult on them because they're willing to come out and bring several representatives to be here in person.
What, what? What I was thinking, could we push them to the next week? And give them even more time to to get their people there?
Yeah, I, I'll happy to.
Yeah. Work on it, the schedule. You kind of know what is desired, see if it can happen. The best next thing to it.
Jerry.
Okay. We'll, we'll get ahold of you for sure, Adam, no matter what. We just need to figure out what's the best thing to, the best way to do it. If that TSP meeting is on the sixteenth, that would be bad because that involves a lot of staff. And that, but again, and it would be bad to divide if some people want to go to transportation and they want to go to this, that would be a bad thing to do. So maybe we do try to put it off a week.
Yeah, I, I'd like to hear what they, what they had to say. If, if that works for them, I think that personally, I think that would be a better, but yeah, you got the plan.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Sarah.
Do we don't have it on the twenty-third or we don't have it on the thirtieth?
Yeah, Will, you got it.
Got it.
We put you as chairman of the special meeting.
Any other information?
Just a couple other quick updates. Budget process is continuing. I believe department heads draft narratives are due today. I'm working with the budget team to kind of finalize, wrap up the recommended budget. I think we're getting close. But that process is continuing. And looking forward to the next steps. As I, as I noted, another one of my updates, just in terms of some upcoming community outreach, the TSP update open houses are scheduled for four sec, for April sixteenth. Carrie Foster Hall, there's a, there's more information on the website, but for folks who are interested, feel free to reach out to the planning department for more information on, on those open houses. And I just wanted to update the board. I'm working, in addition to kind of working on a lot of budget stuff this week, I'm also working on updating our internal processes for both public meetings and an updated public records policy. I hope to within the next week or two have a, a draft kind of updated public records policy for the board to, to review, so that's a, that's a priority that I'm making to make sure we're in a good spot moving forward with future public records requests. That's all I had for you this morning.
Thank you.
I have to go first, okay. And I got an email this morning from Lisa Collier. In what county is she?
Barney, no, Wauwawa.
Well, yeah, Wauwawa. I should have known that because I got it. And she, on Monday, at five o'clock, they are going to do testimony and she would like a written support letter. Seth has agreed to do testimony, and what it is, is Senate Bill Nine. And it is relating to taking a drive test, which it directs the field offices of the Department of Transportation located in rural counties to prioritize requests for drive tests when the request is from an applicant who lives in rural Oregon or within fifty miles of the field office. So Seth has a daughter who is going to be taking a drive test, so he is going to call in and do a testimony. And I would like to make a motion that we go ahead and write a letter as Cook County to write a letter of support for this bill. One of the people that is on the support of this bill is our representative Vicki Breeze Iverson. So I make the motion that we write a letter as far as Cook County to support Senate Bill Nine.
Second.
Well, she's been made in second to support Senate Bill Nine. Any discussion?
No discussion.
All in favor, say aye.
Or my guy.
Robert, aye.
Barney, aye.
Okay, and then the other thing is not last Friday, but the Friday before, I went to Furnish for Hope, which is a charity that is quite amazing. I forgot my folder. Everything is done by donations, and what it is, is she, this gal, her name is Megan. And she started in her garage, and now she has a warehouse that's kind of over there by the, the Wilson and Bend roundabout, and you can donate from Monday through Friday from nine to eleven. She takes in furniture, and every four years, there's resorts and they have to change their decor. So like she has four hundred lamps that are like these bubble lamps in blue. And, and Les Schwab takes their trucks and they take tires to locations. And then they fill up with furniture from resorts and fill them and bring them back. And Mission Linen takes linen, so Sun River just donated four thousand towels. And they take the, Mission Linen takes the towels, launders them, and they bag them up. So when I was there, they were getting ready two homes for people, because a lot of times veterans in the community, they get just enough, enough to get into a home, but they have no furnishings. Or if you know someone that has an RV, they have no blankets or pillows. They also will take used mattresses, and there's a company in Bend that will sanitize the mattresses, and then they put like a tight pillowcase around them. And then they reuse them, whereas no one else can take mattresses. It's kind of an amazing charity. The women that are there, this is what impressed me the most. They take a piece of masking tape. They write Susie on it. They put it on their tape. They don't waste money on name tags. Why would they? And they work, and so if you want to, if you know someone who needs furnishings, her, her desire is the little girl who's sitting in an empty room that won't ask friends over because she has nothing. And so if you go to her website, you can click in there and you can, if they vet you, they don't want it to go to someone who's going to put the furniture on eBay and make money from it and buy drugs from it. They want to vet and know, but they were doing two total homes for people that had just gotten into a home and needed furniture. It is a very, very rewarding and wonderful thing. They have Conexes of furniture. And it is amazing, the agencies that are giving to this thing, and it's called Furnish for Hope. And they have a pamphlet, and it has little hearts of all the homes that they've helped. They went to Warm Springs, they went to Madras, they went to Redmond, they've done Bend. And in Prineville, so far, they've only done twenty homes, and they want to break into Prineville. So if you know of anyone that is in that situation, it's a great, great charity. So I just wanted to call out. I'm going to go to my food insecurity group that kind of reaches out to the churches and stuff and say, but I wanted to say it here too. So anyway, that's my deal.
Great.
They take donations. You can go there from nine to eleven, and when I was there, they were in a line of people waiting to unload their donations. It was, it was, it, it's like amazing how people are giving, and like the mattress thing was amazing to me, how this company sanitizes them, and then it's like I say, this tight like knit thing they put over the mattress and zip, and then they take them back out and give them to people. I mean, obviously they're not so, you know, not super soiled or anything, but yeah, it's just amazing how they're reusing it. And yeah, it's an, it, it really is heartwarming. Super heartwarming, and you can get as much as like a bag that says twin bed, and it has a pillow and a mattress cover and a bedspread and whatever, and you can take that, or you can have lamps and end tables and nightstands and beds. It's, and couches and just an amazing, amazing, and again, I don't know why little things get me, but the fact that you write your name on a piece of masking tape and put it on your chest and they don't, they don't mess with name tags, that impressed me. So anyway, very, very good charity. Okay.
A couple of things, the Ways and Means is going to be here on Friday in Warm Springs.
I know, that scares me.
Yeah, and so I was going to go and talk to them about the fairgrounds and the Wolf Bill. If there's any other ways and means that are coming down, anybody can think of, I'm happy to bring them up within reason.
It's thirty-three forty-nine and thirty-three fifty, that's in Ways and Means, isn't it?
Yeah, those are the fairgrounds ones.
No, that's your RPAs. They, they went through work session yesterday. Will they go into Ways and Means or are they going to ask that? Yeah, the, the range protection. Do they, they went through work session yesterday. Will they go shift now, Ways and Means? So yes, put in for those two.
Those are, that's your, your cricket.
No, the RP, the range protection.
Oh, for the fire?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
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 I kind of like I say, that, no, the grasshoppers is just the eight percent for us to take if they give us any money. The funding is still not in there yet.
Yeah, okay. So the other one, I, uh, last year, we did a cleanup on the Juniper Canyon Road. Um, I've gotten a lot of calls from people in the community that want to do another one. Uh, talked to Brad, he had some good ideas, and then I talked to Eric. He seemed to think that there were some opportunities. If we got a waiver signed, it wouldn't actually be a county thing. I would just work with community members and then the, the road department would uh, pick up the garbage and supply bags for us. And so I just wanted to kind of talk about that. If, if everybody's fine with me working with Eric to come up with a waiver for people to sign. Um, I've got somebody that's a little more passionate about it, so they're willing to kind of write up some flyers and maybe even set up some multiple, you know, two in the spring, two in the fall. It gets a little heavy in the summer, a little hot in the summer, so. And, you know, we figured it's four people per mile, two on each side. And so as many people as we can get, we can go as far, and then another one just can keep going. But it's, it's nice to have people passionate about that and be able to help them move forward with that, so. If, if everybody's good with that, I Eric's, Eric's fine with me. Working together and coming up with a, some type of a waiver to make the county unconcerned. Less concerned, yes.
I think that's good. You might want to avoid summer just because you don't want them out there sparking anything.
Well, and it's hot.
Well, it is hot, but again, spark.
There's not a lot of sparks from, uh, uh, what is it, what's it called? What's that drink with the cinnamon?
Fireball bottles.
And my daughters, they were counting fireball bottles, and we got to about thirty, unfortunately.
Yeah, well, they, they want, they want good breath. Want cinnamon breath.
So I will also be attending the Warm Springs and the Ways and Means Committee. I'll be testifying for Core Three as a Tri-County representative. Also, I had some conversations with Casey Kaiser from the city. I've spoken with Will about it. They have a, have a request to put some lights on war paint. I reviewed it with Casey and we, I just wanted to put it on the building, but I think there's an alternate method that would, would, would be better on, they're going to pay for it, the city themselves. We're going to have an electrician look at it and see, get back to us. Second that I visited with him is they would like an easement uh, on some of the property across from the airport where they're drilling the wells. Will can, is going to follow up with Casey and with them to, to come up with something, but it's a five foot easement, and it's for wires to run from bump to bump. It's on the extreme perimeter of the property. And I think that's all I have. So.
Did we, we didn't ask for public comment at the end, I don't think.
You gotta give Brian a chance.
You gotta give me a moment.
Oh, okay. Is that at the very, very end?
Yes. Yes.
Like right now.
Right now, right now, is there any more public comment?
I thought we did it with Ford Manager.
Adam, you probably better come up and talk into the mic for the record.
Thought it was, I thought it was right after this.
Adam McCoskey, I told you I'd be back some reason. So notices to new plans or whatever in the county, if. The urban growth boundary and the biomass plant is going to be rezoned then from EFU to heavy industrial, that's the plan. And I know we talked earlier about EFU and notices being sent out are seven hundred and fifty feet. Uh if it's heavy industrial, what's, what's the, what's the amount of property that you have to have to get a notice? Is it seven fifty or five hundred? Does it go back to five hundred? Will's looking.
I believe it is within, so the notice of a hearing through the quasi, this is a quasi judicial land use matter. So if that's the type of application you're talking about, then it's two hundred and fifty feet. Um where the subject property is outside an urban growth boundary and not within a farmer forest. So heavy industrial outside their growth boundary.
Can you get closer to the microphone?
Yeah, so if it's zoned, if it's zoned heavy industrial, it would not be farmer forest. And then if it's not in the UGB, it would just be two hundred and fifty feet. Around the edge of the subject property.
So for, even though it's county past the urban growth boundary, this is a city thing, so it'd probably be two hundred and fifty feet. That's even closer.
I can't speak, I can't speak to the city's notice requirement, so.
I'm going to ask them on it on next, next week. I'm sure I'll be there for some reason. Anyway, that was a question. Thank you.
Thanks, Adam. Anybody else? Anybody online? All right, there's no executive session, so this will close the meeting. Thank you, everyone.
More coffee?